We're going to call the April 20 meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Agency and Financing Authority to order. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by Mr. A.J. Tendak. All right, Mr. Tendak, you're going to have to work on your leadership skills. All right, so the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the longest properties that are listed in our agenda. No action was taken. That brings us to our regular agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is note in our agenda, this is a -- we're not permitted from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important public forum for items that are in our jurisdiction. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near their front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the city clerk is a timer that we use to assure that everybody has a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is a flip chart that indicates which agenda item we are on at any one moment during the meeting. We do recognize that for some folks speaking in public can present some anxiety, and so we do ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, or other demonstrations in the chambers. Also, if you are intending to speak on a regular agenda item, we do ask that the cards be turned in prior to the conclusion of the staff report. Once the council questions and discussion and the public testimony begins, we don't take any additional cards. All right, so with that, we do have a couple of requests to speak under item 1A. The first is by Gary Reason, representing Post 8762 of the VFW. Welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here to speak on three issues. I had Randy from the building come over to the post. We're looking to put a handicap ramp in front of our post to get the people off that curb gone. They've been falling off that curb into the street and getting hurt very badly. We've done our best to light it up and the street, but we're trying to get a handicap, and Randy come over, look at it, so it's a doable thing. The third thing is, a second thing I should make is that we'd like to have a four-way stop at Soul and Driever. Since you opened Iron Gate up, they use that for a racetrack. We've had several people almost get hit there, and me being one. And the other thing I would like to have is speed bump put in front to slow these people down. They fly down the street doing a good 40, 50 miles an hour after they come out of the iron. You hear them punch it. So we're kind of coming here to, you know, come to you, and I've talked to Randy, and we've discussed it, we'll get together later on, and we'll come up with some kind of a drawing to get that ramp. We want to get that ramp to get the handicap into the hall safely. And that curb is a real problem, so that's why I'm here to address you tonight. So thank you.
Great. Thanks for the heads up, and I'm glad to hear that Randy's working on it, and we'll get periodic updates from staff as well, so thanks for that. And Bill Lowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Willie Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. Just wanted to share this a little bit with you folks. When I went into town, I was noticing certain things happening. You notice how the, when you're riding a bus, the bus driver on his seat, it's got different kinds of springs and some kind of a wrapper around it. And I couldn't resist, and I told the bus driver, whenever he's driving a bus, or anybody else is driving a bus, they all have spring fever. Thank you.
Mr. Lowell? All right, those are all of our requests under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Portem Kristoff?
Very quickly, very quickly, the West Sacramento JPA Flood Control Agency met last week, Thursday, April 14. One of the, one of the issues was the state bond funds, I mean, the bond funds are going out for a bond issuance, and that's on our agenda, Agenda Item Number Six. Our board approved that. And the other was the contract for professional services with MHM Incorporated, and the board approved those professional services. So we'll talk quite a bit about the bond issuance tonight, because that was our major agenda item.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll report on the school two-by-two, which Councilmember, Councilmember Viegas and I attended. We met last Monday, April 11, I think that's right. And in attendance also were the superintendent of the schools, as well as board members Leland and Menke. A couple of agenda items of note. First, we put back on the agenda and asked the school to, the school district to look into opening the River City High School track for public use. It's just something that we needed to follow up on from our discussion back in January that we started, and so the school district was, seemed amenable to looking into that further with the city. If they haven't already, I think they were going to be contacting our staff and begin working on a possible plan this year to make more use of that, but we'll see if we can make that happen. Secondly, Mike Lukin from our staff on the Public Works team talked about the city putting in an application for a grant that would help strengthen and support another grant application we're putting in to look at safe school routes. That way, we could have a better prioritization of public's use of money and improving routes to schools, making sure we were getting the right feedback from schools and stakeholder, the school district folks, as well as other stakeholders in the schools. So we felt that that was a very worthy endeavor, and we'll probably be seeing that back in our agenda at some point from, from the Public Works group. And finally, the school board did present with us, to us, a number of ideas they had for upcoming agenda items. They took some time between board member Leland and Menke, as well as superintendent coming up with some, some items that we felt we would be best partnering with them to try to solve some low-hanging fruit, so to say, to work with the city and the school district. So both Councilmember Viegas and I were very open to those, and we told them we'd be following it with them to kind of come up with some agenda items on our end that we could start to maybe partner with them, try to find some, some projects we can work on together. So that pretty much sums up our school board meeting, our school two-by-two meeting.
All right, this morning, Councilmember Ledesma and I attended a briefing that Sacramento Mayor Kevin Johnson had convened of city and county officials and the regional chambers from all six counties, essentially the Secog service area. The meeting was held at Secog, and it was two, just about a two, almost two-hour briefing on sort of the state of where, of what has occurred in the last 10 days, on the work that the mayor and others have been doing to retain the Kings in Sacramento, a lot of briefing about what occurred at the MBA board meeting, and sort of what the, what the strategy is intended to be over the next several days, weeks, and months, and potentially over the longer term. And there was broad interest in the room among mayors and supervisors and councilmembers in being supportive. There was no, just to get cut right to the issue, there was no ask on, you know, is there some financial participation or something else? And so we were, we were quite agreeable on the notion that we would be, that we're supportive, that the Kings matter, and that the facility itself matters, that we do have a lot of constituents and residents in our city who go to Disney on Ice and America Idol on tour, as well as Kings games and the other events that are at the facility, and the Kings have been in our community at the Skateboard Park and at other events as well, and certainly we have a lot of fans and supporters and a lot of businesses that work with and, and marketing partnerships and what have you with the Kings. But obviously, we're not prepared, we're not, we're not in a fiscal position to make a financial contribution as a city to, to a longer-term arena project, but frankly, that wasn't the conversation today. The conversation was mainly about the near-term efforts to, to make another season for the Kings in Sacramento viable, so that the work on the arena and, you know, other ownership options and what have you could proceed over a longer period of time than just a few hours. So I thought it was, I thought it was a good meeting. The mayor was definitely in his element on this, on this work, and then had a, had a quick press conference following. The MBA is in town tomorrow and Friday for, essentially on a fact-finding mission to, I think it's fair to say, verify the claims that Mayor Johnson made when he was in New York with them about the level of financial support from the corporate and business community in the region, and in the interest of the region in working on the project together. And I'm going to be part of at least one of those conversations with the MBA leadership, but there was a, overall, I think a positive, a positive meeting, and at least at this stage, an understanding that regional support is essential, but also, you know, not as clear that we're not the only ones that aren't, are not in a financial position to be making a city contribution towards an effort like that, but there has been a growing movement at the grassroots level and among the corporate community to step up for the, for the near-term objectives. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add, Mr. Ledesma?
All right, item 1C's appointments, supports, and provisions, we have none of those this evening, so we're going to proceed to item 2, which is presentation of proclamation recognizing the celebration of Arbor Day 2011 in the city of West Sacramento. Is there a motion on the proclamation? So moved? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. And then item 3 is presentation, is a proclamation recognizing May 2011 as May is Bike Month in the city of West Sacramento. Is there a motion on that proclamation? If that's been moved by Mr. Johansson, and seconded by Mayor Portem Kristoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. We do have outside guests, although at least one of them is a resident of the city here for the Bike Month proclamation presentation, so we'll go ahead and ask them to come up to the podium for the, for that presentation.
Over here, it's, it's a throwback to when we didn't have cameras.
There would really be none of this without A.J. and Greta Bell's, both mayor participations, especially on, maybe Bike Month through Secog. Maybe it's not.
Well, let me first read the proclamation and the record, then I'm going to invite Bob from the Yolo County, the Yolo Transportation Management Association to make a few comments as well. This is a proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council declaring May 2011 as May is Bike Month, whereas millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is an excellent form of exercise, a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, and a fun and enjoyable activity. And whereas bicycle commuting is an effective means to reduce air pollution and conserve energy, and whereas more than half of commute trips and three out of four shopping trips are under five miles in length, which is ideal for bicycling. And whereas bicycling offers an environmental, environmentally preferable alternative to short car trips, because cold engine starts are the most polluting and least efficient. And whereas if just 3% of car trips were replaced with bicycle trips, it would yield a reduction of over 2.5 vehicles mile, vehicle miles driven and 3 and 1/2 tons of smog-forming pollutants, 20 tons of carbon monoxide and over, over half of the particulate matter released into the air. And whereas bicycle commuting helps improve the livability of communities by reducing traffic noise and congestion. And whereas bicycle transportation is an integral part of the multimodal transportation system planned for by federal, state, regional, and local transportation agencies. And whereas commuting by bicycle can be a safe, enjoyable, efficient, and convenient alternative. And whereas local bicycle commute promotions, often known as bike-to-work days, have been successful at encouraging bicycle commuting. And whereas May is Bike Month helps to increase public awareness for bicycling, educate the community about the benefits of bicycling for transportation purposes, and encourages people to try bicycle commuting. So now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of West Sacramento does hereby declare May 2011 as May is Bike Month. The City Council of West Sacramento encourages all citizens to recognize the importance of sharing our streets with cyclists, and encourages citizens to participate in cycling activities to whatever extent possible during this month, including cycling to work and logging their miles on www.mayisbikemonth.com toward the 2 million mile challenge. So that's the proclamation, and on behalf of the Yolo TMA, maybe say a few words, and then I'll add a couple.
For one, we'd like to present you and the council with May is Bike Month t-shirts. We have them in different sizes, and we'll leave them with the, with the clerk for distribution. So this is the official shirt for the month. Also, I'd like to extend our appreciation for you, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Secog necessarily, and speaking on behalf of the entire region, for co-chairing the initiative for May, May is Bike Month. The mayor is a tremendous cyclist and a great example, and we really appreciate your participation. I've mentioned that A.J. Tendak from Secog, A.J. is kind of the, the brains and the heart behind May is Bike Month for us on the ground, who work events and try to get things going and try to get recognition. And then we have great people like Greta Bowles, who worked for the city, who are just enthusiastic and wonderful to work with. We appreciate everything that the city does.
So much.
Thank you.
Let me just say, I mean, this is, this is going to be an important May for, for biking, and it is, it's actually a great honor for West Sacramento, I think now, how long, how many Bike Months, May is Bike Months have we done? This is the seventh, and I am the third West Sacramento to chair May is Bike Month, right? Along with Oscar Viegas, and because I'm so old, the third one is me. But there's no other city or county in the region that, including Davis, that has had that level of commitment to May is Bike Month, and so we're very, and A.J. is, in addition to being the leader of the May is Bike Month work, is also a resident of our, of our city and a commissioner in the city of West Sacramento City Government, and so there's, that May is Bike Month has solid roots in West Sacramento. We're committed to it, we're committed to it as part of our future, but also as part of our, our present, and as a way to promote health, to promote just slowing down a little bit and appreciating all that's in our community, to see that sometimes you miss when you're speeding by in a car, and as an alternative way to really promote environmentally sustainable ways of getting around and really enjoy the place that we're in. And so I'm committed to it, I know the whole council is, and Mr. Viegas, who's not, who just happens to not be here this evening, is a big supporter as well. And next month, we, one of the events that we're working on with the farmers market is May 19th will be the first, the opening night of the West Sacramento Farmers Market, right across the street, and I know Denise Seals from the Farmers Market Committee in the chamber was here two weeks ago, talking about a market fox promotion for folks who either take transit or bike to, to the first farmers market. So there's, we're going to have a lot of promotions going on in May and activities, and please visit www.mayisbikemonth.com, both for more information, but also to sign up, log your miles, join teams, join groups of people, coworkers, you know, club members and others to compete with, to compete against, and to be a part of the great activity. So we've, we've hit 1.3 million miles last year, and we're, we've raised the stakes. So we've got to get to 2 million miles this year, otherwise it'll be a black mark on me.
I have built a million of those.
I'll do them all myself. So if everybody else will do their million, then we'll get to 2 million, but, but thanks so much, and thanks to Secog and A.J. for all your work as well.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it.
That brings us to our consent agenda, which is item 4. Is there any, are any questions, or any item that any member of the council wishes to remove? All right. Mr. Johansson is moved, and seconded, Mr. Ledesma second, the adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. That brings us to items 5, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 11-20, amending the general plan and parks master plan, and first reading of ordinance 11-6, amending the municipal code ordinance recognizing urban standards within the Bridge District. Ms. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. These amendments are being brought forward to you this evening as a requirement of the Smart Growth Investors and Bridge District Riverfront Development Agreements. These are the two property owners, Fulcrum and Unger, in the Bridge District that we have development agreements on. And they are also being brought forward to largely provide greater awareness that the Bridge District specific plan and possibly other specific plans may contain standards that slightly differ from the general plan, or the zoning ordinance, or other portions of the municipal code. The Planning Commission did review these at a workshop and in a public hearing format. They have provided their recommendation to adopt these amendments. They also, in Attachment A of their resolution, which is in Attachment 6, the attachment to their resolution had four additional recommendations. One related to joint-use parking, and they basically said, in the future, we might want to take a closer look at the joint-use parking in the municipal code. Building-mounted signage, they felt that the, the specific plan design, urban design standards and architectural standards did not address the mounting height of signage. So it talks about building-mounted signage, but it doesn't have any restriction on where on the building base that you can mount it. And the concern was that you might end up with signage mounted at the top of high-rise buildings, and that when you're driving along the freeway, that you would see a lot of signage on the horizon. So they were recommending that at some point in the future that we might take a look at that. It's not something, most of these I'm talking about right now would not be something that we could incorporate with this action, because it would need further analysis and possibly additional environmental review. But I just wanted to highlight these in case you wanted to give staff direction for future amendments to bring forward. And that also goes for number three, which is the high-density building window privacy. The architectural guidelines talk about windows, you know, providing depth, articulation, but they don't, there's nothing in the specific plan architectural guidelines that, that speak directly to privacy. And then fourth was the traffic level of service, which basically was reinforcing your direction on the general plan update to bring forth, to analyze and bring forth a level of service policy for the district, a level of service fee. And so that is being incorporated in the general plan update, and will be studied with that environmental document. And so that concludes the Planning Commission's recommendations. Most of the amendments are, are fairly basic, and for the most part, provide references that point a user of the document out to the specific plan, and alerts someone who may not be familiar with the Bridge District or other specific plans that there could be these other standards that exist. The two that are the most technical and the most significant are the, the change to the noise under the general plan policy and the zoning ordinance, and also the, the traffic level of service policy. Those two items, you have attachments in the staff report, four and five, that are the excerpts from the supplemental EIR that was certified back in 2009 with the actual specific plan. And so all that's being proposed is simply pulling that exact language into the other documents. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? The sign piece, the building-mounted sign piece, where, is that in one of the grids, or?
It's Attachment 6, which is the Planning Commission resolution, and it's Attachment A to that.
Oh, it's Attachment A to that?
Yes.
Is there a sign, building-mounted sign piece that's in what you are proposing that they would have wanted to see different, or this is an entirely different issue?
No, this is an entirely different issue. It's something we could certainly incorporate, but we would have to return. We'd have to do more analysis and return possibly with additional environmental to incorporate that particular item into these amendments.
So, I mean, I'm just going to clarify, so they're asking us to review these four issues and possibly give them direction, or give you direction, maybe revisit these?
Yes.
But as is the, the changes, the changes that you proposed are ready to sort of go, be acted upon, if we want to revisit those, that would be a separate action, correct? I just want to be clear.
Yes, or you could direct us to go back and incorporate the four that the Planning Commission also included in their recommendation. And I would actually say the three. The, the last one, the traffic level of service, will require a fair amount of environmental, and that would probably be better suited with the general plan update. But the other three would be something that we could come back with.
And would you? I mean, this is coming to us because it's part of the agreements and all of that, but I mean, if we said, yeah, go back and do this stuff, what would be the driver, the venue in which it would return? I mean, would we expect to see it in a few weeks, or the next general plan update in 2025, or?
I would estimate that you would probably see it midsummer.
I think you get the signage piece. On the, on the parking, on number one, we were saying it would appear implementation is not working as envisioned. What's, what are we talking about?
The, when they, when we asked about that, they were referring more to some of the things we're experiencing in the Central Business District with regard to parking as development occurs, and then how do we remove surface parking? How, how does that work in infill developments?
Okay. I'm not interested in that, actually. I mean, I'm interested in the outcome. I don't see the problem. I mean, I get that not, that we've had hiccups here and there in how Central Business District parking works, but that's to be expected. I mean, we don't, we don't control every piece of property, we don't control the pace of every kind of development, and in the outset, we should expect, in every district of the city, actually, that we will have parking problems, because we are so auto-oriented. But we're designing, just like we've done with the Central Business District, we've talked about this before, but we're designed to be for pedestrians and cyclists, and cars as an accessory. People are not used to that, there's not enough uses here yet, there's not enough, I mean, right now, you come because you're coming to the library, and then you leave, or you come, you're coming to the theater, and then you leave. But over time, as more things fill in, and more people are living here, it will be clearer what the transportation vision is. So I don't, I think it's way premature to be drawing some conclusions that shared, that, you know, the joint-use parking doesn't work, just based on, on what's occurred in the, in the downtown. That's just, I mean, we have so little experience to get to that point, so to, to go back and start to revisit that based on really no empirical evidence, we would just be making another, you know, do you want to have another policy call about the same topic? I don't, I don't think that's a useful, that's not a useful use of the staff's limited resources to be exploring that topic. The others, I, I think I understand, and I, and other than number four, spend, you know, spend a little bit of time on, but that first one, to me, just, I don't, I don't, I think it's premature to go out and revisit a policy that we, it's just being implemented in, and actually in a different context even than what the Bridge District will ultimately look like. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I'll ask a question on two. I agree with you on one, because it is too early to make that call. Two is on the signage, I mean, isn't, it is not in the Bridge District specific plan. Is the sign ordinances or anything else govern this before you go revisit it, or?
No, the sign ordinance does not. The sign ordinance limits the types of signage that can be mounted to the building. It, the only limitation as far as where it can be mounted on the building, it excludes rooftops. You cannot have signs that protrude above the rooftop. But under the sign ordinance, it could be mounted anywhere along the face of the building. So Calsters would be a good example of one that is mounted at the very top, but not a rooftop. So you could have, if we had buildings that were all that height, you could have signs. That was the, one of their comments, is you could have all the signage up at the top. So there was some discussion as to whether there should be a limitation to where it couldn't be over a certain number of stories, or that it had to vary by building. I know the city attorney's probably looking at me, because signage is something we have to be careful about how we impose restrictions.
I have a second.
In some of the larger cities, they, you know, whoever happens to own the building even next door, you've got something at the top floor and there's different ways to do that and I don't know, sort of this is a discussion that needs to happen still. I mean, it's not so much the vertical level of the signage, but it's what the sign is and how it's looked because, you know, in our Central Business District, for example, we have restrictions on the types of signs, you know, the relief and that type of size. You could have the same discussion with this, with that, totally offensive, but the way this is worded now, this would prevent any sign at all if this recommendation is taken to, or to be above a certain height, it doesn't matter what the, in what context or what type of sign.
They did have some discussion as well on the sign being, maybe there should be a requirement that the sign must be occupy, must advertise a building that occupies a certain number of floors or within that, as opposed to it just being the name of the building owner. That was something else that came up. But they didn't have any other guidance beyond that, they didn't make a recommend, a very specific recommendation, other than the sign ordinance doesn't address it, the specific plan does not address it, and they thought it might be something worth considering. So this is something we could bring back in the future and address it through the sign ordinance. We do have some zoning ordinance amendments that we're going to be working on and bringing back to the council in the summer.
I just think vertical spacing is just one aspect of what we're talking about here, so probably needs a little discussion.
Further discussion? All right, then we're going to open the public hearing on item five. I don't have any requests to speak, but because it is a public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and go back to the council. Joe Anderson.
Yeah, I think, I think the planning commission did a good job on this. I agree on the parking issue with the mayor and council member Ledesma. Signage issue we talked about, you know, the privacy window, obviously that's something that looks to be, some decent input from the planning commission on that. But yeah, I just wanted to point out that there's a couple of things that are happening here and we've seen it over the years, this whole issue of the level of service. And I'm totally in tune with the level of service in that particular district, E in general or F at the major intersection, because without that, it's just going to be difficult to get transit-oriented development to work. And the other issue too is, I totally agree with the issue on, well, basically opting out or the ability to opt out of a number of different requirements based on the specific plan and in particular, a recognition that urban parks are different than suburban parks. So urban parks tend to be more reflective, not rely so much on soccer fields, but open space, open views and that type of thing. So I really think that it's a good start to start thinking about parks because really traffic in parks are kind of the two big drivers to impact these. And those are the two big things that we can possibly look at incentives to create the high density that we all want there. So with those comments, I would agree with the recommendation.
Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank staff for bringing this, these revisions back and the commission did do a good job. I understand, having been there, trying to get some conversation around the issues they brought forward, having tried to do that myself back in my commission days. But, you know, I think we kind of talked through one and four. I don't see a huge imperative to address two and three now since at this very moment to burn staff time to bring back right away. But I'm afraid that if we don't do it, we'll forget about it. So I'm trying to find some way that the city manager can kind of work through that, the staff can figure out how to address it in a timely fashion so we know it gets taken care of.
The staff does maintain an ongoing list of ordinance changes that they want to entertain and so you won't necessarily get lost. If you have a sense that there's a higher priority for some versus the other, then the rest would just go on that list along with other considerations.
And I think that's where I might recommend the signage. I'm not, you know, at a, we're not here to talk about the policy of what it will be or, but I'm okay kind of addressing it, bring back at another time at a regular interval for both those issues. That's all.
I think the planning commission did a good job.
Yeah, I'm not in a hurry on those, but I'm also, I, we've been fortunate that when we've had unexpected opportunities and projects emerge, that our planning and environmental work has already been done. So I, you know, I don't want to see the two and three next week, but I don't want to see them in three years either. I mean, you know, there, staff's under a lot of pressure to get work done, but we should try to perfect the Bridge District planning requirements and documents to the maximum extent possible so that that, so that we are prepared on, you know, the drop of a hat for projects that emerge that we can't envision in today's market. So that's not inconsistent with what anyone else has said, but something sort of in between. I think I still have a proposal pending from 1999 that the staff still hasn't brought to the council, so that list that Toby Starcraft has is long. Okay, further discussion? All right, is there a motion then on item five?
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 1120 and waive the first reading and read by title only ordinance 11-6. And I think that's it. Second, and that's it, right?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Second. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Ledesma, second by Mayor Lieutenant Kristoff. If all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item six is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 11-22 approving the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency's Series 2011 Bonds for Flood Protection Improvements. Mr. Blumberg?
Mayor, members of the city council, tonight's staff is requesting that the city council hold a public hearing regarding the approval of the issuance of the WestAFCA 2011 Series Bonds to fund flood improvements in the city and following the public hearing to consider Resolution 11-22 that finds financing of these improvements is of benefit to the public. I'd like to introduce members of the WestAFCA finance team who we have here in the audience tonight, including Mike Bissette, the city's flood manager. We have Ken Decker, the city's financial advisor with Del Rio Advisors. We have Tom Westhoff and Robert Martz of Westhoff Cone in Olmsted, who will be marketing our bonds to investors. They'll be available to answer questions during the, any, you know, public questions that may come up in the hearing or during the city council discussion. Tonight's action is about the city's continuing success in advancing our flood improvement program. WestAFCA is proposing to issue what will be the second in a series of revenue bonds in the amount of $13.3 million and this would follow a first bond issue back in 2008 that was a $10 million issue. The bond proceeds will be used to leverage as much as an 85% state contribution to fund our early implementation program or EIP construction projects and about a 50% state contribution to our, to our planning projects. In addition, these proceeds will be used to leverage significant federal funds later in the future. It's important to note that our ability to leverage these state and federal funds wouldn't be possible without the support from the community since these 2011 bonds will be secured by the WestAFCA flood assessments that were approved by West Sacramento voters in 2007. I'd like to briefly summarize the proposed use of the bond proceeds. Majority of the bond proceeds, about 78%, will be used to fund construction projects. The Rivers and the CHP Academy EIP projects are currently out to bid for water construction and the WestAFCA board is expected to approve those construction contracts in June of this year. Both Rivers and CHP Academy will address levy deficiencies, including through seepage, geometry issues and underseepage along short stretches of unstable levy. In addition, the bond proceeds will be used on various west slip repair projects around the city. Approximately 22% of the net bond proceeds will be used for continued planning, engineering, design and environmental analysis. A majority will go to the next phase of planning for the Southport Sacramento River Levy EIP project. Completion of the planning for the Southport Levy project over the next two years will then allow that project to move forward into the construction phase in 2013. An add to these planning expenditures, the use of bond proceeds for the general reevaluation report, the GRR report, which is very important, critical to the city's ability to secure federal authorization and funding for our levy improvements. On May 12th, it's anticipated that the WestAFCA board will authorize actions, including the issuance of bonds, and we anticipate that the bond sale will be completed sometime around June 9th. The net, the net bond proceeds available after cost of issuance and establishing of a debt reserve fund will be about $12 million to fund the projects I just described. While the city council's not issuing bonds, but rather WestAFCA, the state of California still requires under the Marx-Ruse Act that the designated local government entity, in this case, the city council, find that the proposed financing is for improvements that are of benefit to the public. And so tonight's hearing is to consider the benefits of public financing to the, to the community. In summary, following the holding of the public hearing tonight to receive comment, staff is requesting that the city council approve Resolution 11-22 that finds that these improvements are of public benefit. That concludes staff's presentation.
I'll make a couple of comments before you open the public hearing if I may. Yeah, this is something that the West Sacramento JPA Flood Protection Agency is very supportive of. This really does a lot of things as far as the city is concerned. Number one, it moves forward with flood protection. And as we all know, that since the rules and regulations have changed from, with the core, we've got a significant amount of flood protection to continue to construct and improve on. This also is really sort of the, in a way, it's our upfront monies. One of the things that we're doing is we are upfronting these monies and the state and the feds will reimburse us at a later time so that we can do other EIPs, i.e. the Southport EIP and continue to move forward, continue to move south. So this is going to get us a lot of money and I think it's pretty worthwhile. And then the other part is this puts us very, very close to the 50% completion rate and we all understand what that means because of FEMA. We just heard it a couple of weeks ago. And so with this proposal moving forward, us getting these improvements done, we meet that threshold of 50% and so FEMA then will take a very good look at the city of West Sacramento and not, especially when they're going through the remapping process, and they'll look very favorably on that. So, I mean, for those reasons, I think that this consider, this resolution considers approval.
All right, so you know, the questions, this time we'll open the public hearing first on item six and we have no requests to speak, but it is a public hearing, so does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, return it back to the council. Let me just say, I think Mr. Kristoff is dead on on this one and a lot of work's been done. This is, you know, this action's critical tonight to the work that has been accomplished and to laying the table for the future. This, this bond issuance alone, which is supported by the local voters, isn't enough to get us to the 50%, but it's enough to get us the, it's what's necessary to provide the funding for the planning and the design, the environmental work that would allow us then to get external funding from the state or federal governments to actually construct the Southport Sacramento River Levy. And if we are able to complete the full extent of that levy improvement, then we'll get the 50% mark, which really would be a very significant accomplishment and threshold for the community. So it makes a lot of sense. I did have a question on the GRR portion of the funding, the $321,168 that we've spent on the GRR. Is that, is that dependent in any way on what we had hoped to get from the federal government for the upcoming fiscal year? Yeah, he's helping you out.
It was really just proportioning out the bond issuance at this time and reserving some monies for the GRR study. It did not take into account the recent federal actions or lack thereof.
Okay. So is that what's left? I mean, is it, do you fund the Rivers EIP, the CHP EIP, the Southport Levy project and the, what was left after, and it was close to 12 million even?
Right, exactly. We fully expect though that the line items that we included in the bond issuance will have more monies available once the projects are settled and credits are received back from the state and we'll be able to move those back into the study and to future projects.
And we're really sort of hoping for the fix.
Yeah, really sort of, no, we're absolutely, totally hoping, so. All right, other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we adopt Resolution 11-22 approving the West Sacramento area flood control agency's financing flood protection improvements.
I'll second. All right, it's been moved in second, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries and we're going to return to the presentation of one of the proclamation staff has asked that we present it. I didn't realize we had external guests that weren't city staff here to receive it, so we're going to make the presentation on the Arbor Day proclamation at the podium. I'm going to read first the proclamation into the record. It's proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council recognizing the celebration of Arbor Day 2011 in the city of West Sacramento. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of West Sacramento was first pronounced a Tree City USA in 2006, now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento urges all residents to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodland. All residents are urged to plant trees and to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations and we hereby recognize Arbor Day in the city of West Sacramento. President, do you want to say a word?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We applaud the city for recognizing Arbor Day and this Tree City and their efforts to protect heritage trees. We also thank the city arborist, Dina Kurtley, for the excellent job she's doing to support the growth of trees and the planting of new trees. I've lived in West Sacramento since it became a city about 22 years, have been a member of the West Sacramento Conservancy for many years. I believe in preserving the natural environment and promoting policies to end global warming. Thank you.
Did you want to mention Lana Paulhame, who's also from the Conservancy, is in the audience, she's being uncharacteristic.
Lana Paulhame, the founder of the Conservancy who persuaded me a long time ago to belong.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cabaldin. First, I'd like to invite the city council and all of you watching out there to our Arbor Day celebration on April 30th at Bright Park. We're going to be to be beginning the ceremonies at eight thirty and then planting fourteen new trees in Bright Park with the help of the Mormon Helping Hands Project that's occurring at the same time. Every spring, we create this proclamation in honor of Arbor Day to celebrate the benefits trees provide all of us. But let's not forget that these trees depend on people to survive. So it's also a celebration of the relationship between people and trees. We really do depend upon each other. And then I was introduced you? Thank you, Joyce.
All right, that, with that, we'll turn to the council calendar. Mr. Ross, welcome back.
Thank you very much. This is the last meeting of the month. Our next meeting will be May 4th. I would call your attention to the April 30th program. As you noticed, Arbor Day will be celebrated in Bright Park. That's also when we'll have the Helping Hands event in the city. We'll do things at Riverwalk, Alice Norman, as well as Bright Park. A number of people, hundreds of people literally, will be assisting the community and upgrading and sprucing up some of our features in those parks. And so it'll be an important day for this city. So that, that's all that I have this evening on the calendar.
All right, questions on the calendar? The city manager report.
I have three items that I wanted to bring to you. The first is the, we had a discussion just briefly about the flood program. We are progressing very rapidly towards implementation of the next phase of the early implementation program. And one of the things that's happening is that we have acquired the right of way for most of the work, but there are a few properties where that has not been accomplished. And so the flood JPA was briefed on the fact that we will probably have to pursue imminent domain on some properties. And they asked that we give a report to the council on that. And so we'll be distributing in your packet from, that goes out on Friday, a brief memo that talks about what we're anticipating there. It's a few properties, but, but we wanted the council to be aware of those. The second item is I included on your desk a budget memo that kind of updates you what's happened in the last month. As you know, we'll be coming back to the council in May to talk about budget alternatives. In that past month, we've had some progress and then we've had some disappointments in terms of revenues and expenditures coming in worse than we had hoped. And it's, we're anticipating that we'll have a slightly bigger hurdle to deal with when we come back with our budget alternatives. And so I've given you some information about that. One of the really unfortunate things is that in the process of developing the alternatives, we had a major crash in our software and have been unable for the last week or so to actually run the financial systems that are necessary for us to do the budget modeling. We anticipate that'll be finished or fixed this week and we'll be back on track to try to produce those, those alternatives for the council to consider. Lastly, there, it appears that we may want to consider a special meeting of the council to hear a possible appeal on the West Coast recycling project. And we wanted to see whether the council would be available and amenable to a meeting on the nineteenth, oh, I'm sorry, the twenty-ninth of April, of June, I'm sorry, twenty-ninth of June.
June.
Is that right? Twenty-ninth of June, because there isn't a meeting in July for two more weeks following that. So I don't necessarily need an answer this evening, but if you can look at your calendars and see whether you might be available. We don't know that there will be an appeal and that we'll have to do it, but it seems highly probable that.
Questions for the city manager? City attorney report? Staff direction from members of the council? Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, Toby, one of the, we've got a current buy local, shop local campaign, as you know. Do we have any, I'm looking for a way to see whether or not that's actually doing anything and helping support local businesses. One of the things I've found is actually relating to a contract I think we did with the West Capeline and Four League that is lease space, but has done nothing more. There's no improvements in the lease space. There's a sink on the floor I drove by there, and it's just, it's really just a shell of a company. I'm just wondering if they just leased that just to say they've got a local office. Because really, I think what we're looking for, I thought, in this campaign is to help support companies that invest a certain amount in West Sacramento in terms of employees or, or staff or whatever. So there's something falling through the cracks there. Would it be possible to compile a list, I don't know how much effort it would take, of whether the, to what extent they've got a presence in West Sac for some of these larger contracts?
I think your assessment is accurate in terms of, there are a couple of, at least a couple of engineering firms that we're aware of that have, maintain nominal offices in the city. They rent parts of office spaces or have one, one workstation or something like that. And not a great deal of their business is conducted here. And they get a business license and I think they hope to achieve some local preference on that basis. As to getting an inventory of what all of the firms that do that, I don't, I'm not sure how we would go about doing that. I think we're aware of at least two engineering firms that are kind of in that category of having, maintaining small, small ancillary offices, but don't really have a big presence in the city, but still claiming a local presence. Do you have any ideas on how we would see if that policy's working? I mean, it's certainly... Well, you know, the, I think that what we, we are in fact looking at the question of how do we define local presence to be, you know, what level of significance do we put on that? I think in one sense, it's helping in the sense that those two offices probably wouldn't be here except for the local preference. So, you know, somebody's making a little bit of rent money as a result of that. But I think that there, the intent of the council is to talk about people who would locate their operations here, have significant employment opportunities. And so we're, we're looking at categorizing it as more than having an address and a business license in, in our efforts. We have to be somewhat cautious about the whole question because there's certain state laws that prohibit using local preferences. And if, if it involves a federal project, it's almost prohibited. But I think that we're, we're looking at a better way to characterize local involvement.
Would that come back to us then?
Well, they, these are normally administrative procedures, but I think they'll come back to you in the form of selection processes when we come, when we bring items before you.
Great, very good, thanks. Staff direction? We have no future agenda requests. Mr. Kristoff moves.
Move.
Mr. Johansson seconds. Since the meeting is adjourned, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.